Ms. Marshall, roll call.
Mrs. Danny?
Here.
Mrs. Esler?
Here.
Mrs. Selford? Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Seesaw?
Here.
Mrs. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Tinsley?
Here.
Mr. Armour?
Here.
2.01 is the approval of minutes. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 28, 2018. Do I have this motion?
Seven. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listing. Motion is to approve the invoice listing for March 2018 through April 2018. Do I have this motion?
Seven. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03 is the treasurer's report. Mrs. Powell?
2.03 treasurer's report. As of February 28, 2018, Pendelco's balance was $48,9696. During March 2018, local, state, and federal revenues totaled $2,853,209. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $6,933,557. As of March 31, 2018, Pendelco's current balance is $43,929,348. The motion is to approve the treasurer's report for April 2018. Correction, it's actually March 2018. Do I have this motion?
Seven.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.04 is the budget transfer report. Motion is to approve the budget transfer report for March 2018. Do I have this motion?
Seven. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three on tonight's agenda is staff student community recognition. I'll turn it over to Dr. Stock.
Hi, Chris. The Armour. We had some fine students from Sun Valley that the board wanted to recognize in previous meetings. One of them, I think, was canceled due to a terrible snow event. You can imagine that this past winter. But we're pleased, though, that tonight we can catch up a little bit and recognize two really terrific and wonderful kids who are just great standards of the kind of kids that we have in our district. We'll start tonight with recognizing an incredible athlete that we had in our midst tonight. I was saying to Mr. Armour, with these recognitions, you wish there were greater, more tangible honors to give out. But we wanted to be clear to both of the students that when you're recognized by the board, you are essentially in our record-keeping for years to come. You're in the board minutes. And we're acknowledging as community reps, an incredible job well done. We shake hands with 200-some students at the end of each year for seniors when they graduate, but we only bring a few select students before the school board for the regular meetings. Don't always recognize just academics. Sometimes we recognize artists. Sometimes we recognize musicians. Sometimes we recognize athletes. Tonight, we have with us Sun Valley's finest wrestler, frankly, since the school has opened. And remarkably, this is a student athlete who is just a sophomore. Hunter Katka is the first wrestling state champion in Sun Valley history. First underclassman in Delaware County history to be a state champion. A record of 41 wins and one loss this past season. A 75-win-and-8-loss career record through two seasons. Currently ranked in the top 20 in the United States for the 220-pound weight class. Currently the third-ranked sophomore wrestler in the country in all weight classes. And selected by the Delaware County Daily Times, not just as all-county, we're all Delco, but wrestler of the year. When this fine athlete was wrestling, and I was updating my son, who goes to school in Delaware and has a very good friend who is a great wrestler at his school, I passed along the name. And immediately, my son showed me the phone, and his friend wrote back, "Yeah, he's a beast." And so even out of state, he's known. So it is our honor to have a picture taken and to present a Pendelco Proud shirt and a certificate of honor to Hunter Katka. I also want to thank Coach Ellis, who was out here tonight, Mr. Sassy, and Athletic Director Mr. Rafferty for coming out and recognizing the efforts as well. Thank you. And Coach Borner. Just like sneaking in, thanks. Our next honoree this evening is Hattie Korf. Hannah resides in Aston Township and is currently a sophomore at Sun Valley High School, also in the junior ROTC program. She is an all-around honor student who is best characterized by those that know her as someone who is thoughtful, generous, kind, and humble. Her book, Advocate, is a collection of poems she's worked on for quite some time. She also has another published anthology of poems called The Pilot. Hannah continues to draw inspiration from her creative writing teacher, Mr. Paul Carboni. Hannah is equally adept with prose writing as she is with verse, and is currently working on another collection of her writing that will consist of memoirs and short stories. She was recently notified that she won third place in the Delaware County Young Poets Competition for her poem, "We Played at Being Soldiers," and she's going to be honored at an award ceremony on Sunday, May 6, at Redwood Community Playhouse. We're recognizing Hannah because it was brought to our attention that she is a published author. That we have a student at Sun Valley whose book can be purchased on Amazon. It's a phenomenal collection of poetry. The information was brought to me by our supervisor of curriculum. And in conversations with the board member, the board members said that's really quite remarkable that we have students at our school that are self-published. And we're very proud of that accomplishment. And we want to do the knowledge chart tonight, and we look forward to more and more books being published and sold in the future. Hannah, thank you.
I just had a couple words that I wanted to say about Hunter. First time I met him was during the, it was a couple different, even if you talk to people in the community and the people who know him, this town or in other towns around him. Now, how engaged he was the first time I met him was when we did a senior citizens volunteer event during the holiday season. And if that doesn't give you goosebumps or make you feel good with the kids in our community, see how Hunter acted after he won the state championship to where, when he came to Aston Communities Center, he had all those kids, all those wrestlers from Delco, not even just from Aston, from Delco, from all over, to want to even just get his picture taken and get his autograph. And just how humbled he was. And I think all he wanted to do was just go back into his van and go home, because after a long, long weekend. So you could just tell how he acted. And even from my son, I mean, I still even hear it all the time. He still watches, if not daily, weekly, the YouTube video of how he wants to be like you someday. So I just wanted to say that, you know, where we are, whether you know it or not, media and Aston, you know, at all, wherever, everybody wants to be just like Hunter, my guy. Yeah, just tell you. So I just wanted to say thank you for all you do. And then also, obviously, it's refreshing as well for Coach Tommy. You know, he's been wrestling in our district for more than 20 years in our town, or in our towns, and he continues to be an asset to our district. So thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you so choose, if you decide it. If you want to go, you're welcome to go as well. Number four on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Stock?
Well, again, everyone who's here and is interested in the important work of our school board, as I look out particularly, welcome to representatives of the panel staff and the screaming again from PDEA. Partly, we are down to our final seven weeks of school. Very much feels like we were a year not too long ago, talking about the start of the school year and what we hope to accomplish. In between back then and now, great things continue to happen in our schools. This year, we made a push to ensure that the fine activities and accomplishments happening throughout the district were promoted almost in real time through the very positive aspects of social media. We have a record-high number of followers on our district Facebook page, and our district superintendent Twitter feeds have been impressed with the number of our staff who this side decided that they would promote the work of their students and their classes by pushing out regular snapshots and updates of what's happening in their little environments. If you follow any of our social media and website feeds, particularly under hashtag PendelcoProud, one of the things that you would have learned even just following it in the last few days, that we have not one, not two, not three, but four Kathy's nominees for awards in the performing arts related to the performance of Shrek the Musical. You would have noticed on the past couple of Monday evenings that many of our staff are participating in thematic ed chats where they share ideas and instructional strategies in an online professional learning community that gets hosted by one of our administrators. You would learn about our summer enrichment offering, which have increased this year over last year by 20%. You'd see the latest four teachers from Pendelco who have become Google Educator Certified at Level 1, bringing our district-wide total close to 20 teachers now who have passed that difficult certification. You'd see students throughout the grades engaging in challenging lessons. Hear about our numerous award-winning poets from the Delco Young Poets Contest. Hear about our numerous award-winning writers from the Unhard authors that'll be here next month. You would see updates from excellent outside-of-school social or charitable activities that Sun Valley students were involved in. Info on our million-word readers, updates on our spring sports teams, even links to tutorials that teachers have been sending out for students who are taking AP exams. To the point, as a member of the community, if you are not following PDSD online, I recommend that you tune in from time to time. You'll be impressed, and you'll certainly be informed. Stepping aside from the activities occurring in the schools for a bit, I turn now to the more mundane but super critical work of our annual budget. Tonight, our business manager, Tracy Marshall, will provide updated financial guidance for our board ahead of our request to approve the proposed budget for the 18, 19 school year. There's a spoiler alert, though. Charter school costs, special education costs, and pension costs, all expenses that the district has oftentimes little to no control over, continue to present a major, major wind that blows against us and taxpayers. For instance, next year's budget for required pension contributions includes pension payments nearly $2 million higher than what we paid just four years ago. Cyber school tuition, pension costs, and special education costs eat up the increases in revenue that are proposed, leaving far too little to direct towards other aspects of our programs and our operations. We need legislative help, and I will continue to call for that. What I should note, when you talk about increased special education costs, that challenges for students who are classified as special education in cyber schools. We have no way to know what the level of challenges are that they are facing, but we are billed $27,000 a year for students who are in cyber school who have those needs. And we feel that that is grossly inflated over the amount of money that we spend to educate our own students quite well at that fact. So without further ado, I'd like to turn over a discussion to Tracy Marshall, as she can update the board on our budget.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. Just going to pass around some documents for the board. Typically, at this time, we usually do a PowerPoint presentation. We're not going to do the PowerPoint tonight, but there's copies in your handout that we're going to go through, and we will have that on the TV channel. And while Dr. Stein will introduce this as the mundane budget, I'm going to try to make it exciting. So I'm just going to wait until the handouts get around so you can take a look. As you're aware, again, this year, this will be the fifth year running, we won't be raising the taxes above the index, so we're not to exceed 2.9 as the board approved back in January. That was January 24. So tonight, we're going to be asking the board to adopt the proposed final budget. May 1 is when we will get our notification of our allocation of property tax reduction amount. Once we get that, I will add that into the budget so we'll see how that brings down tax bills. May 23, we'll be doing the final budget presentation and asking for the board to vote on June 20 for the final budget adoption. This year's budget is looking at a mileage of 28.8971. That is a 2.9% increase. The additional mils are .833. And our total expenditures this year, we're at $63,428,323. In my prior presentation to the board, we were looking at a $2.4 million deficit. We are now, if you look at the summary sheet, at a $1.9 million deficit. As we went through before, this is using, we always budget, budgetary reserves, so we have $430,000 budgeted for budgetary reserve. That means we'll be using $1.5 million of fund balance as this budget is right now. The board has put money aside for debt service. That's one of the biggest drivers this year, and just because of the additional debt we've taken on. We have a spike in debt service for a couple of years. We put that money aside, so we're going to start using some of that. Also, Peasers continues to become a driving, continues to be a driving force in terms of increases that we suffer. May 1, as I said, we'll be booking up the state property tax reduction. Last year, that amounted to $195 per approved home state off of their tax bill, so it's been typically the same thing for about the past four years. So we'll look at about the same. For the meeting assessment of a home in Pendelco of $115,800, the annual cost of the taxpayer of the new military, we $3,346.28. That represents an $8.09 increase per month. The fund balance that we're going to use is we are going to look at using those committed funds of Peasers and debt service, and also we have money that we put in an assigned fund for technology, and we're going to be using some of those to make some capital outlets for more technology for the high school. Our budget is driven mostly by local revenue, so 73% of our budget comes from local revenue. That's state taxes, transfer taxes, earned income tax. That's $45 million of our total revenue. We're getting $15.7 million from the state, that's 25%, and the federal government is kicking in close to 1%. In terms of expenditures, most of our money is spent on instruction, over $34 million. Support services are $20.7 million. Operations is 1.2, and then our financing costs are over $6 million. As would be expected, salaries are the biggest part of our budget, with 43% and 27% also from benefits. So that's the big driver in education is people, so salaries and benefits. In the past, I have a chart showing you the historic military rates back in 2010, '11, we had a 3.39% increase, but as I stated, for the past five years, the board has decided not to raise taxes above the index, and we continue to do that. That's pretty much the snapshot of the budget in your handout. You will see detail of how expenditures are by function and object code. Everything has been presented on PDE 2028. We'll be putting that on the website so that people can look at that and have the time to react. And as I stated, we'll be coming back in May for another budget presentation, looking to adopt the final budget in June. So any questions?
Tracy? Thanks, Ms. Marshall. Something I want to point out, I was reading an article in the Fox Mercury about districts in Pennsylvania that are sitting on $26,000,32, $44 million in reserves and still raising property taxes and requesting the state, for an exception, to go above and beyond the Act 1 index. And Tracy and I have consistently talked about this. We think there's a fiduciary obligation not to just build up reserves to a level that could potentially be that large, and yet still ask taxpayers to pay more and more just to have this level of comfort. And frankly, once we hit our 8% number on our reserve funds, we make sure that we are limiting our tax increases and making sure that we're making wise use of our fund reserves so that we're not just going to the public and saying, "Pay me one," and exceptions that we can get to 3.5% to pay for our Peasers, or get to 3.8% but also pay for special education classes. We haven't done that. As long as Tracy and I are here, we're not going to continue, we're going to continue to not recommend that we do that. I do want to point out that even with the increases in debt service next year, which will be an additional $0.5 million in debt service in light of the work that we've done in Coburn and North Lee and the payments that come with the improvements to the facilities, the portion of the budget that we are directing right towards instruction, which is salaries and programs and curriculum, appears to be the highest that we've had as a percentage. And that's always been a goal for me, to look to see if we can move that needle by half a percent. So the more dollars that we can direct towards instructional categories, to me, is critical. And I point that out, you know, hard work by this board, hard work by Tracy Marshall and the administrators, making sure that we're not cutting programs and people come to count on, making sure that we're properly funding our employees, making sure that they're getting good raises that we have as agreed upon in our CBAs, making sure that we add staff when we need staff. We have more staff today than we did just a few years ago, based on needs, whether it's the needs of the students that we have in front of us or instructional needs. Tonight, I'll be asking to add another math teacher at the middle school for programmatic needs. So we're going to keep those priorities front and center while we do look at other things such as aging facilities that may still exist, aging athletic fields that may still exist, and still try to be responsible in the process. We will be making efforts to try to reduce our costs of cyber tuition so that that money can stay back where it belongs and we can use it for expanding and paying for programs that we have. So we appreciate the board's support with this budget this year. Wrapping up, I would just like to note, tonight, for the people that are in the audience, the board is also being asked to approve contracts that will help us to continue our work to significantly upgrade facilities and athletic fields. Following up on the progress at the elementary and middle school level, we are getting close to the finish line, I think, as we begin to direct all of our attention to the high school. And we do want to thank the board of directors for their willingness to consider increased investments in our facilities so that our students and community have facilities and playing fields that they can be proud of and that they should be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. Number five on tonight's agenda is the student representatives' report to the board.
At the Franklin Mitt Federal Credit Union Partners in Education Awards night, our HQ team was honored. Samaya Begum received an award for all Delco HQ, and Olivia Shears received the John D. on Angst Scholarship. The Brimmore Rehab Center sponsored a guest speaker, Joe Cornock, at the Cruising Smart Assembly for juniors and seniors just a few days before junior prom. I was inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. Our National Honor Society just inducted 38 new members at the recent ceremony in the Met. Recently, the Vanguard Volunteers and the Leo Club went to Fair Acres to play bingo with the residents. Tomorrow, we will have Poem in Your Pocket Day, which focuses on students and teachers discussing their favorite poetry throughout the day. The Language Arts Department organizes this event every year for National Poetry Month. And lastly, students and teachers in the related arts are preparing for the upcoming Arts Alive program on Wednesday, May 23.
Three Sun Valley students, including myself, Molly Magority, and Matt Bell, participated in an all-state team save driving competition in West Whiteland. Molly came in third place on the written test, and I came in second for the driving and third overall. There were four peer buddy students who participated in the Choose to Include Summit about including people with special needs. On April 11, our Social Studies Department hosted four Vietnam War veterans in to speak a variety of social studies classes in the Met. A couple weeks ago, a student at Sun Valley participated in a practice safety testing that will start in two weeks, starting with AKEM on May 7. And today, the ninth and 10th graders attended an assembly called "Don't Stall, Just Call", which encourages young people to call the police if someone needs medical attention for underage drinking. The caller will have a pass at being charged since they called for help.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Number six is announcements for the public. In accordance with Act 48, the Sunshine Law, the board met an executive session, an executive session this evening to discuss litigation and personnel issues. Number seven is comments by members of the board. Number eight, vote for board information legislative council report. Number nine, public comments. Number 10 starts on page 3, continues on 4, and ends at the top of page 5. This references the Pendelco buzzer 2017, 2018, Act 93 plans, PDEA agreement, PSDESPA agreement, PDSSPA agreement, PA School Code of Conduct 1108B. It is the administrative recommendation to approve all personnel items as presented. Do I have this motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, the board utilized a consent agenda to approve the agenda items 10.03 through 10.16, with the exception of 10.1, 2.1. That motion will be pulled and separately dove it on. All contracts, preparations, and solicitation events are subject to review with approval of a solicitor. Do I have this motion?
Seven.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 10.1, 2.1, motion is to award Field Turf USA through Keystone Purchasing Network work related to new synthetic turf field, resurfaced all-weather running track, and associated stormwater improvements at the high school stadium. Work also includes new team shelters and fence for the varsity softball field and new bullpens and batting tunnel foundation for the Sun Valley varsity baseball field, for a total not to exceed $1,893,232.70. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Ms. Armour?
Mrs. Danny?
Yes.
Mrs. Esler?
No.
Mrs. Selford?
Mrs. Jones?
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Seesaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Armour?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6.1.
Tonight, in addition to our regular motions, we have 10.17. This motion is to authorize the administration to begin negotiations with Aston Township to obtain the services of a school resource officer within the following parameters, all of which are subject to change. The cost of the SRO shall be shared by the district and the township, with approximately 75% of the cost being borne by the district and 25% by the township. The SRO will remain a township employee or contractor. The district shall have input in the section of a particular officer, selection of a particular officer. The district shall have the ability to reject the selected officer. The district shall have the input into the assignments and job responsibilities of the officer. Do I have this motion?
Seven. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Comments by members of the public? Comments by members of the board?
As we talk about this potential SRO officer, I do just want to commend the local police departments recently. I saw on Twitter that there were some Aston police officers showing up at Aston Elementary recently playing football or something with some of the kids, and I've seen the brigade and police at Coburn regularly, so I do want to just publicly thank them for their involvement in our their involvement in our kids' lives and our community at, at large.
I just want to note, I noticed we have Vic Vitara, who's here tonight, representing teachers, and I wanted to share with the board, it was my joy to be on site at the Partners in Excellence Dinner last week, where he was recognized as Pendelco's Teacher of the Year. Tremendous honor for him, certainly very, very well deserved, and he brushed from his own after-school practice with one of his youth orchestras to get there just in time, and it's a well-deserved award. I also wanted to note that on this agenda, ten-point-fourteen, I've asked the board to affirm the board's organizational chart. There are no changes to our administrative organizational chart, it's just a matter of record-keeping and making sure that we have that document. It was clear we didn't have that, formal-wise, when there was a change about a year ago, so there's no, we are not contemplating changes, and no changes to our current organizational chart in the administrative team.
Number thirteen on the agenda is future meetings. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May sixteen, two thousand and eighteen. It'll be the study session here at the Service Center. Wednesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, is the business meeting here at the Service Center at seven-thirty. Motion for adjournment?
Second.
(applause) (music)